I did not talk personnel, I did not say anything and that coach could have left by now. Okay, and so.
Becca Hopkins as Culture High School Assistant Cheer Coach.
I move Culture Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Becca Hopkins CHS Assistant Cheer Coach for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, motion second on this, do I have any other public comment on this agenda item?
I understand she's been assistant for a number of months, is there a reason that she wasn't approved before now? That she couldn't be paid earlier?
We had to get it actually written, we had to get an MOU written for her. She was hired, she was hired last year as an assistant and it was with Kelly's maternity pregnancy.
Right.
And so, but that was for last year only, so this year they've written this as an MOU for next two years until it comes to negotiations again.
Oh, so it doesn't fall under like the normalist?
No, there's, that actually hasn't been a position.
There's never been a position and all coaching positions are one year contracts.
I understand that, but I just wasn't sure why an assistant coach would have to have an MOU separate from the other coaches.
There has been a position before.
I see.
And they've actually grown the program to the number where they need to have a second coach.
Any other public comment? Board? Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I would like to recommend Emily Vincent as Culture High School Prom Advisor.
I move the Culture Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Emily Vincent CHS Prom Advisor for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Angie?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Wade?
I'm staying.
Aye.
Okay, and I would like to recommend John Courier for Frank Branton Middle School Head Wrestling Coach.
I move the Culture Public Schools Board of Trustees, John Courier, FBMS Head Wrestling Coach for the 24-25 school year. Second?
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye. Can I say it's kind of nice getting this item? So being in the middle of the season, thank you John for stepping up for that.
Yeah.
It's also nice having a courier back in that wrestling room.
Yeah, that it is.
And I would also like to recommend Leslie Neese for Frank Branton Middle School Head Boys Basketball Coach.
I move the Culture Public Schools Board of Trustees approves Leslie Neese, FBMS Head Boys Basketball Coach for the 24-25 school year. Second?
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item?
Yeah, if I.
This is Janelle Asbury, Primeut Elementary School Assistant Student Council Sponsor for the 24-25 school year.
I got Wade. I just wanted her. Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mr. Russell. 9.03. Mr. O.
It's me, alright, I recommend that we have remove the high school and middle school principals where it says they'll be the kind of nine coordinators to replace with two appointed administrators for the board, so that could be any administrators. That way, if we wanted to balance it out, it's male, female, however we want to do it, we have a lot of flexibility to do it then each year.
This, this needs two readings, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
And if you don't mind, when we drafted it up and you see the draft on there, we had different wording in there, but when you make your motion, they'll say to replace it with two appointed administrators.
Just cleaning it up, that's all we're doing. Right.
I move the Culture Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the first reading of policy 3225 Sexual Harassment of Employees to remove high school and middle school principals and replace with two appointed administrators. Does that work?
Well, that was 9.03, 9.04 is about both employees. We did, it was two different ones.
This was.
This says employees.
Yeah, it was on all three.
Yeah.
Correct, is it, okay. Oh, that's, the, the heading is.
Oh, the heading is wrong.
Right, surely swapped. No, they're both the same heading.
They're both.
The resolve is the same.
Yes.
wording. So are we good?
Yes, yeah, sorry.
Second?
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye. 9.04. Relatively the same.
Yeah, it's just, it's the same thing as.
We're just removing the action titles, yes.
I move that the Culture Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the first reading of policy 5012 Sexual Harassment of Employees to remove high school and middle school principals and replace with two appointed administrators.
Okay.
Okay, motion second, any public comment on this agenda item? Any further board? Wade?
Aye.
Tiff?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 9.05. Policies 3551 and 3551 dash P1 Drug Testing, I think. Should I just say something about that?
I would just like to propose possibly switching from doing urine drug screening to saliva screening. I know the schools have done that in the past, Robinson, the nurse system is, middle school does saliva. Okay, so they're a little bit more advanced. The nice thing about the saliva, it's not intrusive at all, it takes a lot less time than urine. Because if you have a student that comes in and they don't have to go to the bathroom, they have up to three hours to provide a urine sample and there's some students that will just kind of take their time and drink water, you know, to get out of class or whatever, and then there's others, you know, that will free up drink the water and they'll go to the bathroom. But a lot of the times, it's very, very time consuming, not only for us, for me in the clinic, but also for the students because they should be in class. So with the, the little oral fluid kits, they look like this and the test strips are just built right into the kit. So basically what it is, it's like a sucker, they put it in a round for a couple of minutes, squish it around and then you take this, you squish it into here and then it gives you results within two minutes. There is different panels that you can order, right now we do a seven panel drug screen for the students, the middle school and the high school students. You could choose what panel you want to do, it goes all the way up to 12 panels of drugs being tested. So it's, like I said, it's a lot less time consuming. I think it would be good, especially for not only the high school students, but the middle school students, because when I go to the middle school, I mean, some of these kids, they just come out of elementary school and they're like looking at you like, I have to what? I mean, there was some kids that cried and, you know, and so I explained to them, you know, and then they're fine, but it does, it takes, it's very, very time consuming. The, basically, the, if there is a test that is a non-negative test, we would still send it to the lab because it has to have confirmation and so the lab would do the testing on it and then they would send the final, you know, results to the school. The accuracy on these, they have changed in the last, you know, several years, so they are a lot more accurate. Basically, if there is a line on here, once you wait for this, then it means it's a negative test. A line is a line, I mean, the line can be super, super faint, I mean, if there's no line, then that means it would be a positive test and we would send it to the lab for confirmation for that. I don't know, I just think I. I mean, it'd be a lot easier to do these for the students and it would save a lot of time, they're less expensive. Cost on them, but right now the school's paying $75 for each drug test for each student and they're doing two randoms a quarter for the middle school and the high school, so I mean, that's a lot of money. And I mean, I, I understand, you know, that the drug testing for the students that are extra for the activities, sports and stuff like that, it's very important and we don't want them doing drugs, but I mean, this basically does the same thing as doing urine.
Do you feel like it's just as accurate?
Yes, yes.
Do you have a statistic?
These are coming out, the DOT is going to start using these next year, theirs is a little bit different. They don't get the instant results, it's just sent to the lab, but it's actually up to each company if they want to do the saliva versus the urine. I mean, they can do both, they can do one or the other. But yes, they're very accurate and.
What, what are the seven panels on there right now?
Yes, yeah, you can choose anywhere from six panels all the way up to 12 panels. So like your seven panels would cover like your marijuana, your amphetamines, your furbetuits, cocaine, methamphetamines, like oxy, opiates, stuff like that is like the seven panel, and then you get more into like the detailed, you know, drugs and you can do like a eight panel, 10 panel, 12 panel on these. So right now the school does a seven panel. So yeah, which is amphetamines, cocaine, methamphetamines, opiates, oxy, PCP and THC is what's tested right now. The nice thing about these too is, so urine and hair goes back the furthest and I think like with students where, you know, you want to find out what they've been using recently and with marijuana on such a high rise of people, you know, especially kids using marijuana, I mean, it's going, if they're a frequent user, meaning they probably smoke it every day or several times a day or whatever, it's going to show on here. Say if they smoked it before they came to school or, you know, smoked it at lunch or whatever, it's going to show on here.
What about if they, gummies or all, all of that shows too, like if they chewed a gummy and.
Yep.
Before school.
Yep, that will show up on here, anything that has THC in it, the gummies, that, I mean, we've even had people where they use like those creams and oils with like the CBD and it will show up on a drug test. You have to be super, super careful, because I know, you know, there's employees like the mine and the plant where they use those because they went and had surgery or whatever, so, and it helps with their pain. It's like, no, you have to stay away from those because they will show up on a drug test. So.
No, 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 I'm, should we reach out to Chris, our legal team, and it's, it's, yeah. It's our discretion, we're not.
And the other, the other thing with these that is, without getting into, into individual details, it's becoming, it's becoming more prevalent that people who are taking these drug tests are either trying to water them down, either they sit there and drink a bunch of water, it comes back as a dilute, which then we have to go through the trouble and test them again. And the other thing is, and this is disgusting, but they will attempt to borrow urine from someone who they know is clean. And so this really will preclude that, because again, that becomes problematic because we don't have an organization where you, you know, it's not like being in the military where the guy's going to stand there and watch you go to the bathroom. I mean, they're, they're going in there by themselves and so this is something that actually can be.
It's very, it's less invasive, for sure.
Yeah, it's a lot less invasive and it's much less prone to tampering.
Well, the thing is, is if you have a student that goes into the restroom and you don't think that it's yours or it doesn't reach temperature, they've adulterated with it or whatever, you know, then you have to do an automatic drug deserv and then, you know, sometimes trying to find another person that can observe it, you know, can be difficult too, so it's very much less invasive.
I didn't, I didn't catch, was, was nicotine on that panel as well?
No, it was not on here, but I think Wade, that they do have ones with nicotine, nicotine, I would have to check. But this specific one that we have does not test for nicotine.
We're not testing for nicotine right now, are we? Right, anyway, right, yeah, we're not, right?
We know they're using it because there's zins all over the bag.
Well, yeah, but we're not testing for it, right? We should be, yeah.
There's two policies on there, right, that it affects, but it's just changing language, so.
Yeah, it's just adding.
Yeah, it's just adding this, so if one of, if one of you are prepared to make a motion, you can put policy 351, 3551 and 3551 P1 together.
We also wanted to point out on that one as well, there on page five of your 3551, I believe, there's just a little spot on page five that was missed to add the saliva, so it's just a.
Just a.
Just a clerical thing. So we'll make that adjustment if you guys approve on the first reading.
What's the QAQC as far as, I mean, you know, if, if you see a line, are you going to someone else to verify? Is it, is it sent off to the lab regardless or what?
If I look at the test and I see a line, I mean, a line is a line and yes, on these, they can be very, very faint. But like I said, a line is a line, if I, you know, if there's doubt, then it's going to be sent to the lab.
Right, okay.
That was the issue that we had before and that's the reason why we switched from going to saliva to urine because of the tests that we had. They were very hard to read, there was a lot of room for error and so that's the reason why years ago we switched to go back to urine again. And do these, do you feel have less error now that's been changed?
Yes.
Since updated?
Yeah.
And that was really the first question.
And who would be reading these then?
I would be reading them. Because I'm the one that goes to the.
So you administer it still, just like a urine, right?
Yeah.
So if there's any doubt, then it's sent off?
I would send it to the lab, yes.
So is there an extra fee to send it to the lab then on top of what we would pay for the saliva?
So there would be another fee on top of that, I'm not sure exactly.
Versus the urine, it's just one fee?
So the urine is 75, so that includes the collection fee and the lab fee, but like if there's a student test that comes back non-negative, then it's an additional $60 that the school pays for those tests. So I, I would say it probably wouldn't be more than $40 for the confirmation. You know, so it would be the collection fee, which could range, I don't think it would be more than $25. And then, like I said, if that has to go to the lab for confirmation, it would probably be not more than $40.
So I'd like to point out too that, that we did seek this out, the client came to us with this and said, hey, this is new, it's approved, it's. The way that they would like to go.
And I would recommend, I mean, adding language to say if it is a non-negative, it will be sent to the lab to, to verify. Just so that, that if this ends up in a court, it's not just her word against whoever. And, and so that, that's just to, to shield her and shield the district from, from those types of things so that it's, it's verified.
What was that reading, sorry?
Just, I, I, I recommend, yeah, I'm recommending that adding, or adding language to say if it's a non-negative, that that be sent to the lab, just to have that.
Yes, it, yeah, it would be.
Oh, so. I didn't see that part. Yeah, for, for urine, it says it'll go to a gas chromatography, oh, it's like 3551 P1.
So that happens anyway? Yeah, it does, right there.
Okay.
Yep, there's a non-negative.
Oh, that close, okay.
Right here.
Okay. All right, I'm, I'm okay with that.
How do we go about adding nicotine to it? Because we have that in our policy already. I mean, it, it says illegal drugs shall also include alcohol, marijuana and tobacco nicotine.
I mean, we could have, add that to the.
I can find out if there is a kid that tests for nicotine. The only thing, like the urine though, right now that, that we're doing does not test for nicotine. So I don't know if you guys have something different in the past that you might.
I don't think so, I don't think we've ever.
But I mean, I can definitely check into that and see if there's something that could be added if we can.
I mean, there would be something.
No, I mean, the magazine's a bad.
I think we should too. Have you? Yeah, yeah. You can test on Steve and then me, because I would be totally, so then you can see the results.
But we have talked about adding that.
Yeah, I think that's something we could look into. Yeah, if you could.
Yeah, let me know about that and then I'll shoot you guys an email and let, you know.
Yeah, and can you know, can you let us know the exact cost too, just?
Yes, yep.
It does sound cheaper and I, I mean, I like that it's.
Yes. Yeah, I will find that out and I'll.
Like I said, we're, like, we've already reached out to legal, we can massage this, do whatever we want, so. We just needed the approval from the board.
So what do you do if you, like, get one that doesn't, you're just going to send anything off that you have any question about?
Yes, I'll send it to the lab.
Okay.
Yes.
Basically, we're not changing anything, we're doing just a matter of collecting.
Yeah, just switching from urine to saliva.
And what's, what's the documentation on your end, do you, do you take a photo of the?
Custody and control form, it would be a different form that we would use from what we use now for the urine. But like I would order all of that stuff when I order the kits, if this is something that, you know, decides or that you guys want to change. Right now we don't, I mean, I keep the copies of everything, the chain of custody goes to the lab, you know, for the urine, but nothing would go to the lab unless I'm sending something in, so.
And I think Wade's asking is, so, okay, so you've got your test there and you'll get it and you see there, hold on.
Oh, that it's negative.
And that, like, is there some, is there some way of documenting that you saw, like, do you take a picture of it or is there, is there a way that, you know?
I don't think, I mean, just because of tests that we use in the clinic, we normally take a picture of it and then we send that to the lab, but see, this actual kid is going to go to the lab.
Right.
So it'll get put into a biohazard bag with. So it'll get put into a biohazard bag with the chain of custody. And the chain of custody will show that it's a positive test for whatever drugs, you check whatever drugs. But it's basically the same thing, it's gonna have a student's ID, name, the collector's information. And then it'll get sent to a lab. And there's, it's actually a, a different lab, I don't know if it's on here or not. So this is, these are from, this is OralTox. And they actually have their own lab that they use. So it's not sent to like CRL or Quest or anything, it's just their lab. And they just do oral testing, so on saliva. And there's no, there's like not an extra fee or anything that the lab charges you. It's just, you know, for the kits and then of course the confirmation, which I'll find out the price of that. But does that answer your question?
Well, that, that answered part of it, but I, I think the, the part where, I mean, I, I just, just safeguarding the, the students. I mean, you taking a picture of a, of a negative test that doesn't get sent off to the lab, having them, you know, either sign it and date it, whatever. So that that's kept with their, you know, in, in the, in your guys' office.
Oh, yeah, that's the only.
That's, that's.
Yeah, that is, we are, I'm the only one, our department, Health Wellness is the only one that has the forms. We don't send anything to the school, we don't send anything to the principal's, nothing, it's all kept at the clinic. Yeah, it doesn't go anywhere else. I mean, the only person that sees it is myself and the lab if it has to be sent off. Other than that, I mean, if it's a negative test, the only person that sees it is me. Cause we don't send copies to anywhere.
Right.
So it's just, it's just me and the lab.
I may have a silly question, but is it and/or saliva or we are doing both?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's how we ordered it.
Okay, and I know that's how we ordered, I ordered it, I just wasn't even sure.
Yes. Plus the word, I'm just.
I like going to you both for clarification purposes.
Could you word, you can word, yeah, and/or, you could use one or the other.
So who makes that determination?
I would say that I is correct, no? That's a good question.
Honestly, if we're going to do it, I think we need to do one. Because otherwise we're making the money, water and money.
Yeah, get that.
When we used to do urine and then in the high school was saliva and the reason we changed that was so that we were on the same page and things were cohesive. If we redo the saliva and we decide that it's not what we want and we go back and change it to urine.
Cause I've seen all three. Could be follicle, it could be urine, it could be the swab. I've seen ors on all three and then I guess it's the district who decided which one we're gonna use, but true. I want this one, yeah.
And that's what we wanted, just make sure we did the right language and I wasn't sure.
Yeah, we have that order now, we just look.
When you, when you test those, do, if somebody's like got methamphetamine in their system, does it show a line for methamphetamine?
It's been a different line than.
It's a different line than it would be for marijuana.
So like on here, so this is for each drug, so each drug has its own strip on here. And then of course here, this is your, you've got your control strip. And then if this is a negative, it's gonna show a line, if it's a positive, there's gonna be a line.
And I read into this too. Along with Sabrina, we're looking at why we did the urine, why we went away from the saliva back in the day. And like I said, with, with her coming forward and saying, hey, these are vastly improved, this is the direction we'd like to go as the medical body. That's when we were.
Yeah, that was the first question we asked. That was the first question I asked was how accurate is, you know, cause yeah, it's, again, the old ones were, you know, were crap on, were they're not accurate.
Yeah, the old ones are super like, I mean, cause I remember the ones we used at the clinic when the students would come in for their physicals. I mean, and those were very good compared to what they have now.
Yeah. We want it just to say use. Just saliva, right? Is that what we're thinking?
I would, I would say, I, I would agree with Robin. I mean, that if, if it comes back that we wanna go away from it again, we can go back to urine and change the policy again.
So I want them in that to say just.
I move that the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the first reading of. Policy fifty-five, fifty, thirty-five, fifty-one and thirty-five, fifty-one, P one. Adjusting the language from saliva and/or urine to just saliva.
Second.
Okay, a motion second on this agenda, I don't need public comment on this. Need for the board? Tip?
Aye.
Angie?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming and explaining all that.
And I'll get the rest of that information too and I'll send you guys an email and get you guys updated on that.
Thank you.
Perfect. Nine point oh six, disposal of school district property. Obsolete. You guys can see what's on there.
I move that the Colstrip Public Schools Board of Trustees approves the disposal of obsolete inventory items presented as per policy seventy-two, fifty-one. Without a vote. Or, or disposal of, of school property without a vote.
Second.
Yeah, motion second. Any public comment on this?
Is there a certain way you guys want that done? Cause I know in the past, like when the lists are a little bit bigger, you know, they do auctions or like Evan had the e-waste come in. Is there something that you guys, or Robin, maybe you can say what, how you expect to do it?
Plan was, was we put crisis on those things and after the fourteen days after it's advertised. Here we could just set a date and I'm gonna open the shop door and have the cash box and.
Is all the old flooring in there?
Well, it didn't have to be on there, but we'll do it at the same time. Bring your trailer.
No.
My goal is to have that shop cleaned.
Yeah, okay, we need to have that shop cleaned.
Perfect.
Get it out of there.
Get it out. All right, ten point oh one, administration reports, Mrs. Ansel. Oh, that's right.
I ha, I have it, but.
Nope, nope, you're right. They're not gonna present them, we're gonna look them over. And if you have any questions, please feel free to, to ask your administrators.
I do have a question on that, that's okay, I didn't get up to volleyball, but. Would it be okay like the students of the month and if anybody had a bully, could we like recognize them at the beginning of the meeting? Just so they get recognized?
No problem with that.
All right, so I'll do that next time, but.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't have. Didn't have too many questions for, we have a comment for Mrs. O'Toole though, that got committed to this spring to doing a round.
Oh, nice.
So.
Oh, really?
Yes. I told him, I said, I will not accept anything less than that being done at this point now. As a verbal.
We will hunt you down.
I know where you live, Austin. But just, I just, I just, I can't wrap my head around how difficult it has been to just get a few projects, especially there done. It's just been. Anyway, I won't, I won't get into it, but.
Thank you again.
Yes. And.
And welcome to our curriculum supervisor.
Yes, Mr. Christian. In fact, I read Mr. Bailey's too. But I did, Mr. Christian, if you had anything you'd like to say, please. How's everything going?
The floor is yours.
It's going good, happy to be here, it's definitely, you know, a few weeks ago I was just teaching middle school science. So this has been a real change and a real learning curve, but I like the challenge of the job and it's been really enjoyable and I'm just. Strong to be a part of such a great team, so thank you for hiring me.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you. And like I said, Jen, I read through yours earlier on this week too, I had no questions for you, but. I'm good unless anybody else does. Perfect. With that, Mr. O.
Okay. No questions for me, done?
You don't get off that.
I got good stuff, so, not that it. No, and you know, as I glanced through this again after writing it, it's just been really another month of learning for me. I guess that's why we're in school, right? But been learning a lot, so I've had some really good opportunities to Southeast Montana Association, State Superintendent's. Meetings, catch yourself once in a while, twenty-five years as principal, it's hard. But anyway, they've been really good. What they do is they usually have presentations and then we have round table discussions. And so I just kinda listed all the presenters kind of of note. Rod Slinger from Miles City Community College, president there, had a lot of good things to say, would really like to, to get in here and he gives me. Get with us on some, some more credits for our high school kids, that was pretty cool. Larry Crowder, Montana Rural School Advocate, was the superintendent in Colstrip for a long, or Culbertson, sorry, in a long, long time. And just really good guy, very helpful, kinda there for anything that we just need him for, to ask questions of, so. That was good resource, talked to him a couple of times, talked to him at the state meeting too. And then Daniel Lee is the Dean of University of Montana School of Education. And he brought some different information as far as some accelerated tracks for counselors and secondary educators. So I know I've given those out to Ryan in HR and then I've also had them out to at least one teacher. So we're kinda moving on that, that was, that was good to hear. And then Rob Watson, the president of the State Administrators of Montana Association, talks about a number of things, usually funding. That usually get kinda your political end of things. And, and he is really interesting and down to earth too. So it was, it was pretty neat to see, cause when I heard him at the state meeting, I pulled him aside afterwards and met him. And asked him about this, if the funding model were to improve or increase, you know. But I'm obsessed that they're actually paying over forty thousand dollars already, cause that's the, that's where they'd like it to be with inflation, it's forty-one, five, somewhere right in there. And so the neat thing was, he calculated it up real fast and we would be getting that money somewhere over two hundred thousand plus. So I thought that was exciting that Colstrip was ahead of the curve when it comes to paying our teachers. And then also that there could be some money there, but that all has to pass still. And then John Doran, Health Insurance Opportunity HB three, three, two. He's, he's got all the work for the state trust, which could have quite a few benefits and I could go in length. He spoke for at least a half an hour and going into all of that. I know Brittany knows a little bit about it and I hear a little bit about it when I first got here. And that system could be really helpful for all staff members where they're laying that out, a self-supporting health insurance plan throughout. Depends on how many districts join it, I forget what the magic number is, but if, if they get to that point, that all passes. Then that could take a, a little while to get placed, I think it might be another school here. But anyway, that was really interesting to see that opportunity coming up in Montana. And then McCall Flynn, Board of, Board of Public Education, they don't usually come out very often. They said they've been trying to get her and Rob Watson for quite a while, a couple of years really. And so she just talked a little bit about accreditation and kinda where we're at and that's sort of what Chris and I have on our docket for tomorrow. So there's, there's quite a bit with that, but good stuff, good stuff for kids, good stuff for schools. And then, let's see, I mentioned some of the sorry, highlights as we're through it. And then attended the state superintendent's state conference and embosment. And really was good to network, to make some contacts, get to know some people. We had a regional meeting, just ours, our size of schools, listen to, to what other people are going through and what they're doing. But then the keynote speakers, really liked Thomas Murray. So you get a lot of different motivational speakers at these, these kinds of things. His leading with intention to foster sustainable change, a lot, a lot of different activities that made, that made sense. And one was really good on communication and it's the old telephone thing, right? Where you whisper something, actually flashed it up on the board and he said, okay, we were in a circle. And whoever was the oldest in the circle got to be the person that read it and memorize it, which I thought it should have been backwards, cause I was the oldest. Or the most veteran in the group anyway, as far as years of experience. So I didn't think that was quite fair, it should have been the youngest, but anyway, so I read it, gave you like forty-five seconds to read, then you repeat it, right? And unbelievable when you get to the end, you know, what the last person said and they share out. I used to do this in my communications class, when I taught communications. And I, like, two of the, two of the words that I said of the whole paragraph were, were all that was left. So you kinda learn this whole, right, communication, how important it is, one person to the next and, and what's the truth and, and really how important communication is. I know I've talked with admin team about how we need to be a broken record, just repeat, 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 so people hear the same thing. So it's something I know I have to work on. And just some other really neat things that, that he brought, so he was really engaging, that was about ninety minutes to kick off the morning. And we got into some things that weren't maybe quite as thrilling, the cautionary tale of universal vouchers. We had somebody from the state of Arizona talk and present on universal vouchers and. The public money going towards private education and how much that is taken away from public schools and pretty much what it did to. As she put it, destroy public schools in Arizona. So really be on lookout for that because there's already that, at least one bill passed, right, in Montana, so. Something, I'll keep an eye on that too and bring things to you guys as more and more comes up with that legislation. Really, really neat presentation, Mike Jettie on implementation of Indian education for all. I'd heard about him and I heard he's a really good speaker, but everybody else that went after him said, ah, wish we would have got to go before Mike. Cause he's the best one, he's a hard act to follow. And he really was, he was engaging and we learned a lot. I actually had a couple of right answers when he asked the whole group for answers, so I was excited about that. But, and I thought it was really cool because he shared that in one district, I forget where it was, but he said. One district has done this thing with a spreadsheet where they keep track, you know, for what they do from the standards, activities. And I just got through a meeting with our committee here and that's exactly what Colstrip does. So I wanted to raise my hand and say, hey, yeah, our guys have been doing it for years. So I was pretty proud of our teachers, people that have been involved in that, keeping track of that, so, cause you know, funding's attached to that too, so. That was really important, but he's a great resource. Addressing attendance for, from an admin perspective, nothing really earth shaking there, just, just keeping track of attendance and, and how important that is and whatnot. And teacher recruiting there, just some, there are different tracks. One was the paraprofessional route, still kinda underway, not quite completed yet. And the other one was a teacher residency with student teachers. And the other one is a teacher residency with student teachers and getting them in uh to to your district. Uh, some of it requires some funding on the district's end. And I know Ryan has been looking into that too even since the summer. So as things maybe progress or um, hopefully if we get more time, because who knows what that would ever be. But it is something that we really want to pursue. I know Ryan's been looking into that quite a bit. You and I had at least a couple of different talks over the summer. Um, in our admin team, we went through, we planned our first P I R day, uh, mostly for remote learning. We had like six and a half hours that day, so we're hoping to have CPR first aid. But with the four and four hours, we didn't have enough time. So we replanned first aid, CPR. Um, and so we, I know Michelle Peterson, I've had some different people helping out that. So a real good team effort there to get that underway this month. Um, and then also uh, the threat assessment training is coming up. So worked with admin on that and getting people from each school to become a part of a threat assessment. So if there is a threat of uh, whatever kind of nature of school that comes up with student comment, whatever it might be, then you have, uh, I've been through this, um, not this specific training, but uh, one real similar to it. And um, this one's exciting because the presenter, um, he was an S R O that was involved in Oxford School Shooting. And so he's been doing this ever since, presenting on this topic and training. Um, so looking forward to that, uh, the fourth and fifth of November. And then also the whole admin team are gonna be trained in Title IX just as we all see more and more importance with that. And then I I met with MSGI, our Workman's Comp lady. She's actually the one that's um heading up uh the threat assessment, Title IX. They have a number of trainings that they present. But she said it's been a few years since they've been inspected our facilities. So I've got her working with Robert, coming to go through all of our facilities, our grounds and just, just check for safety things. Um, I know Brittany and I met with her and she, she brings you a pretty neat data that that she has and on our schools and our history and how much we spent, how much has gone out and uh, what we've done with Workman's Comp and this, just making our schools as safe as can be. And because of that, and I I do appreciate um people's patience with me as we work through safe schools and what it is that we need because we had some things that we were uh put out to staff and then once I met her, she's like, oh, these are the things that are updated, we need these. So hopefully these are things that we just um continue to know. And now that I know who she is and know ahead of time before we um do that, say next year. So. And then when I was at the state conference, I had, I had a talk with her too. And she was with the lady Leslie, I forget her last name, but she's been here before with Trust and I know I didn't get what that acronym acronyms, I'm kind of a acronym kind of guy, but I should have got it for you guys. And basically what it is, it's um, it's kind of safety and security because she, because I said to Brenda, who are the MSGI, I said, I really want to make sure our schools are safe as far as shooters, intruders, bomb threats, all crisis emergency type things. And she said, well, I do all other end of it, but I'm talking to Leslie, where she's a stand right here. She does that kind of end of it, um, from cameras and it's the camera system that we use. And I did discover that we can actually go in the cloud with ours, so an administrator could see it at home. And so I asked her, well, how much does that cost? Because I am used to having that. We don't have it here. She said nothing.
Yeah.
So um, it's a little bit more delayed, but anyway, so Brenda said, once they come and do their, their um tours of our schools and go through how to make our schools safer, then uh, Trust would do their piece two to do that with us. So as you can kind of see, my focus has been on a lot of getting us trained up on things um that we need, might not have for a while or that we just haven't had this year so that our schools are safer. So um, and then going through other things I've spent time on, just number of policies, there's still some that I've been looking at too. Um, and then our transportation department's been working really hard on the routes, so we've had a couple of meetings with them. And then um, really recruiting for bus drivers. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. And then our enrollment numbers, you can see there, we're at four ninety-six total.
So busy month. On that note, I want everybody to know that tomorrow morning, I would like that to go out. The proposed bus routes for a two route and a one route. So there's ample time for everybody to look those routes over. Bring their anxiety down, weigh you down. And at our work session, we'll uh calmly discuss all this and it will be an actionable item.
And it might, might add a bit and touches some architects too.
Right. And then uh, that's another one we got to uh focus on too, but I want that, that bus route. It's gonna be posted tomorrow morning on our website, Facebook page and the P T O. So parents need to look at them. Uh, with that, I'm good. Administration, anything you had?